Wherever you go.
No. No, and we do have eight o'clock here, so is everyone ready? All right, let me Sam for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, it does not look like we have any public discussion. So, do we have a motion for the agenda and minutes?
I'll move to three.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Um, I saw this as I was looking through our packet early this morning technically, but in the minutes there's stuff about tabling the foreman and like KRHC and Western Iowa stuff. I, it's not an issue, but like one of the sessions at um the annual conference was with Robert's Rules of Order and like I'll talk about this more later too. It would, tabling it isn't, is misused a lot, so it's not, we weren't actually tabling anything. It was postponing, so just food for thought for that.
Yeah, I wasn't here last week, so.
Yep, yep, I know. I just thought I'd mention that, but I thought of it. Any, anything else?
They're just gonna get lower, don't they?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Um, next up is to review and approve the claims, conservation claims. Is there a motion to that? Okay? Okay, yeah, motion to approve. Roger. Yep, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Did you have a report for us, Sam?
Um, I was gone last week and I think um they emailed it to me after Brittany did the claims. Um, did you guys get an email or no email?
If I, if I did, I didn't see it.
Okay.
Did any of the rest of you guys get anything? For this report?
I just looked at the budget report that was in our iPad and I figured out what was up today.
Where's that? In the packet?
In the budget section of.
Oh, yeah, that, that's.
That's a different one, right? Yeah, that's, that's not the new one.
So let me click. Pull that up. See if we can pull that out. Okay, so I'm forwarding that to you guys now.
Okay. And we could come back to that later too if you want.
It's up to you and I'm sending it here. Whoops. And then you guys can look if you want, or you can wait.
Well, let's just go back to that if we have some time to kill between nine thirty and stuff. We can look at it in more detail and talk then.
You should have it now.
All right, and we have the foreman back. Um, good morning, guys.
Thanks for meeting with us a week later.
Little less crowded here. Um, I don't, Bill, I don't know if Doug mentioned, I asked uh last week about the stuff up by Sap Sail um that rode north. Uh, who was it?
Mura. Mura?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working on that now.
Okay, okay.
Yep, that's been taken care of, it'll be, they're working on another one because we had to site something on Mursin.
Okay.
So it'll be addressed at the end of our one.
Do you know what it's like, what's your plan? Are you replacing it through the road or patching it?
We decided to patch, we're gonna patch it uh run on the north side. Most of it's gonna be double wall, just about the whole length of the ditch.
Okay.
And then on the south side, we're gonna patch the first one and then there's a second one, but there's a tile we gotta tie into.
Okay.
And stuff, so that's gonna be all uh put double wall plastic.
Okay, cuz when we were talking about it last week, I think Roger had mentioned that it'd been fixed before or something.
Yeah, we, we've been there before.
That is.
But the top of the tile and the bottom of the ditch are more or less the same elevation.
Okay.
Very little cover.
Okay.
Very shallow right in there. Um, there are three antakes in that and we're removing all of those because that just creates more of a problem. We gotta, just like Bill said, it's dual wall. Structural pipe in there, just let the water flow.
Yeah. My understanding is he wants that driveway that's on the south side taken out because that was holding back water at that time when it was really deep.
Okay.
From the tile each, we're probably gonna clean the south ditch of that. That's what we put in.
Okay.
There's three fiber optic cables right there too.
Well, there's a fiber optic on the north side, but there's nothing marked on the south.
There was nothing marked on the south?
No, nothing marked on the south. There is one on the other, when we put the pipe in, it was just below the pipes, so it was down.
Okay.
Thought I remembered that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good. Um, any other questions from the board or any updates you guys have for us?
Road's open, sounds tight.
Okay.
People are happy. These were done yesterday.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's been a lot of, a lot of, it's been a busy spring, a lot of, a lot of work this year and yeah, things probably do.
Yeah, we still have a lot of storm damage too.
Yep.
Repair.
Do we know how many roads are still closed from flooding like that one or the Bancroft and stuff?
I think we have.
Couple.
That one road north of the junkyard that still has water over it.
I don't know what you're gonna do there, cuz that's always been a problem.
Yeah.
And then we've got a couple that had water on the road, but I think they received it now. As of Fri- uh Thursday, there's still water halfway on them. Three different spots.
Okay.
So.
You decided what you're gonna do, buck holes yet?
Buck holes, is that the one there, three thirty second?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just, Scott and I met up there, we need to get material ordered, get that all replaced throughout the whole road.
That's been a headache for.
Yeah.
Quite a while.
That's what we decided, it's had a repair on it already and.
Yeah, we did it about two, three, four years ago. Right in that area.
Yeah.
Replace it through the road now? It's all shale.
The bridge down by uh like the Terry Full House, I think my mom lives there, um 160th Street, is that? Do we have?
We gotta get a new wing wall.
Okay.
Constructed on that, that whole wing was failed.
Yep.
And then we also have a Coleman going out to uh Dave Gerbers and.
Coleman?
Coleman has property out there.
The anchor, Bob.
Bob, yeah. All those corn stocks, we thought maybe it's the last rain events that would wash them those through, but they're, they're pretty solid in there.
They are true. And we still have quite a bit of debris yet to remove.
All right, anything further for the foreman?
Thank you guys.
Not thank you?
Thank you.
So tell the road workers, thank you.
We appreciate how they do.
I do not see KRHC in here, so. We will skip over that for now. Dan, we will go to your monthly update here.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Too nice to be inside.
It's a beautiful morning.
Uh, some of my metrics for the month of June uh out of my office. Had thirty-four phone calls, forty-six messages, both email, mail and voicemail. Thirty-seven walk-ins, I had twenty-seven scheduled deployments. We did one veteran transport for medical. Uh, we were able to get a couple pairs of hearing aids uh repaired. Just as a side note, um Anne and her husband Mike will be retiring this year in October. So the personal uh attention to that of bringing them in, dropping them off, I'll have to look at an alternative, but probably gonna be more of a delay in hearing aid prepared for veterans simply because of the male infanter. I'll have to see how that plays out with their replacements uh at the clinics and if they'll have something similar or not. Uh, and then we completed uh ninety-two VA forms submitted uh to the regional office. Currently tracking twelve hundred and twenty records. I've got forty claims in the system waiting for a decision by VA. I've got eleven that are marked ready for decision. I'm currently working on sixteen. I've got one supplemental claim in the appeals lane and we're able to get uh one VA healthcare enrollment. Uh, one of the snafus that we have ran into with the PACT Act for enrollment of veterans under that legislation is that VA healthcare enrollment in and of itself is a means tested benefit. But under the toxic exposure uh risk that is included with the law, it indirectly or it's kind of implied, they don't take that into consideration. Well, the issue then becomes if the veteran doesn't wanna report their income, they don't process the application. If they report their income and it's over, now it's delayed because they gotta go to the home office in Atlanta and get a decision. I'm waiting for two of those uh to be completed. Um, last month, we completed District Five training. We had seven of us uh from various counties that were attendants for that. Uh, we went back to and tried our initial mobile medical unit there at the election center on the first. Uh, that was a success according to the team. They're able to handle between twelve and fifteen veterans when they're up here for the brief time they're here. Were able to see six veterans and then I had a couple folks stop by and take a look. Uh, you've got pictures of that uh in your, in your uh packet that I sent you. Um, currently upcoming here in July twenty-fifth, we've got best night at the races. We're uh looking to provide a color guard for that, should be a lot of fun. Uh, also looking to attend the Economic Development Committee uh July thirty-first breakfast. I do have the mobile medical unit scheduled again for August fifth uh next month. And so I'm working on the flyer and possibly uh a radio ad. I gotta talk to Mary over there at LGA and the reminder in the paper, getting that set up. And then what I did is I provided them, we, we talked about trying to bring them in every other month. So for the rest of this year, the next time would be October followed by December. And then I have every other month for next year tentatively planned out, so. Instead of every month, it's every other month, which is better than the alternative, which was nothing at all previously. So we'll get, we'll get working on that. Um, I did get my SOP completed. I have one commissioner that's recovering from surgery and one CC, that then I'll provide you all with a courtesy copy. Uh, just confirming that you did get my quarterly report?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Um, I did submit the IDVA state grant monies. I have not heard anything on that as far as allocation. My understanding is funds will be released once all the counties submit their reports and I don't think they all have yet. That's probably the holdup. Uh, currently awaiting the administrative rules for the recent application changes to the law under Iowa Code thirty-five B and the allocation monies. When I was at the quarterly report or the quarterly meeting with IDVA and also our E-Board meeting for the State Association, they were still working out the administrative rules and that's not all been clarified yet, so. Uh, once that is, then uh I'll give you an update on those recent changes. Um, you also have the snapshot of the ad hoc reports in there for the benefits uh that were noted that thus far that I'm tracking within my system. Didn't know if you had any questions on any of those figures at all? Okay. Um, got a couple handouts there uh that I gave you, the book, the mobile medical unit. And uh the one thing I wanted to share with you on that in particular, aside from the staffing for the driver, they have one RN and two telehealth nurses uh available. They've got two exam rooms, one waiting area, they're able to do labs and they also have uh handicap wheel accessibility uh with that facility. Um, couple changes at IDVA. The, the IDVA has selected a new benefits bureau chief. Uh, his name is Gavin Sandvig and he runs the Iowa Cemetery Division for IDVA and also the benefits and training portion of IDVA. Uh, I have not formally met him yet, I know who he is and uh he had given us an introduction last week, but uh planning to spend a little time with him. A couple of dates that we were able to uh establish and flush out for the fall, our commissioner training will be uh on October fourteenth, which is a Monday at Camp Dodge. The thirteenth will be a reception for the commissioners at the Gold Star Museum. So that's all being handled by IDVA. My fall school will be the fifteenth through the seventeenth. Um, we don't have a, a location for that yet, we're waiting for my IDVA to tell us that. And then the spring school for next year will be the fifteenth through the eighteenth of April. Also was told that Vets Day on the Hill will be the twenty-second of January uh next year. Uh, currently working on developing a training package virtual. I'll be giving uh some training August seventh uh to our new folks over the computer on special monthly compensation portion of the claims process for VA. Uh, lastly, uh, sounds like our country is gonna make some more veterans here. Uh, the Iowa National Guard is planning to deploy next year. Insofar as I know, it's gonna involve eighteen hundred service members. The area of operations will be Central Command. Uh, that is inclusive of Egypt, the Sinai, Kuwait, Kazakhstan. Don't know about the other stands, not really sure, hopefully not. Uh, don't know about Syria or any other contingencies, so. That'll be coming up and uh I believe we had a engineer battalion that's coming back from deployment over a year here within the next week, back to Camp Dodge. I saw a little bit of traffic on it on Facebook, but uh subject to your questions, that's really all I have for my updates.
Um, I guess I was looking at the locations and stuff for the mobile medical unit. Are all those like every other month or do they vary on their frequency for the locations? Cuz like one of them is Story County, Dallas County.
Well, the mobile medical unit is out at Des Moines and they go around to some of these other counties. And, and I got Cassuth County fit into their rotating schedule.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's great, especially to have it a regular thing. I'm sure more people could use it.
Yeah, it was catching on, it was catching on pretty good and then COVID hit and kinda squashed the bug on out a little bit, so. We're hoping to reengage and reinstate that. I think as the word gets out and the veterans are more aware of it, uh so I'm gonna work on obtaining a hundred pot or a hundred cup coffee maker just in case. Probably gonna be, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You wanna go back to the budget report now that we've got it?
Doesn't matter, or we can hit that later.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we got Vicki here. Um, next up is to reconsider the allocation to Western Iowa Tourism. Um, we had a little bit of discussion about this last week. Um, any, anywhere the board wants to start on this?
Well, I did forward Tammy, you said that there hadn't been a request received for funding, but there was an uh letter, cover letter and an invoice sent on May eighth with the funding request um for five hundred dollars um to represent the Cassuth County portion of it for Western Iowa Tourism region, so. Um, I did bring another copy of it, but I did send that to Tammy.
Yeah, we have a copy of it, so.
We did double check with Tammy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We, we had.
Okay, so I guess my request is that was received prior to the completion of it. Um, we would really like to see us be able to have the tour, the county as a member of Western Iowa Tourism so we can take advantage of the different programs and resources that are available to us.
Any thoughts from the board? Anybody?
What, three hundred and two hundred?
Five.
Three and five.
Eight hundred twelve, eight hundred twelve.
We already, we, we already gave them the three hundred to the chamber.
You, you cut the five hundred.
The five hundred from Western Iowa Tourism is what Vicki is requesting.
I guess if no one else is gonna talk, I'll, I'll say, yeah, we asked, I asked Tammy right before the meeting, sorry if she had checked on any of that, she said we did have the request in time. But that was one of our decisions that was made when we were cutting things out of the budget. I guess, I don't, I don't really have a strong desire to go back on all those decisions that were made. Um, we had department heads in here for hours that cut five hundred dollars out of a line item, so. I guess I'm open to discussion rest of the board, but that's kinda where I'm at.
When we're cutting safety expenditures such as not mowing roadside ditches or, I mean, I, I guess that's, that would be my hesitation. I, I realize that's a whole different category of expense, but I, I already did vote to approve the budget, that's where I'm at.
Josh, Roger, Jack, any thoughts?
I think if I understood correctly, it was that you hadn't received a funding request, which was.
That's, that's not true, that's not the case.
That's what we were dying to have yesterday. Their last one, excuse me.
Because you did get that.
That was, that was clarified.
Yes, we did. That was a decision made at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Does there is? I guess I would entertain any motion for this item. Otherwise, if there's no motion, we will move on with no action. Going once, going twice. We will move on with no action then. All right, um, next on our agenda here is discussion decision employee two percent raise. Roger, you put this on?
I put on the agenda, we were gracious to two other organizations that wanted funding and we never talked about the employees, which are a very important part of county government. And I think they got left out and I'm, I'm sure after we funded economic development and uh other things that we had taken out, that they felt hurt and I can understand why. And we also have problems with people leaving because they think they're never gonna get a raise in this county. And that's not a way to fund a service organization. So I think we ought to go back and do some soul searching and give the two percent raise to the employees. I think it's only right.
I guess one question I have is where do you see this money coming from?
Well, it's gonna come out of the local basic.
So out of fund balance or offsetting with other expenses?
We'll have to decide that.
That's, that's a big point to be decided.
Roger's got problems keeping deputies and there's a lot of morale issues in the county. Uh, road workers aren't happy. Um, Phil has a hard time getting employees if they're, know they're not gonna get raises. I don't think we can keep on going as a service industry without having good people and keeping them.
Any other thoughts from the board?
I guess for Roger, you made the comment last week of that we have a spending problem. I, that could be my concern, where, where is the money coming from?
Can I say something? So.
Yeah.
You rebuttal on that, so if there's a spending problem and it's our raises, there wasn't a spending problem, wouldn't you give back the library and then their money?
No, I understand that, uh, and that was the one thing, the board made decisions in this room to cut or to approve. I.
And then you changed that all three times.
I wasn't in favor of all of those changes, but.
But you vote, did you vote yes?
I voted on the budget.
Did you vote yes to those other changes?
I wasn't here, but.
But you weren't here for Cassuth County Economic and the library to vote yes?
I was here for the libraries, but.
And the fair?
I was not here for that. But.
I have something to say. As an employee, I've been here thirty-one years. If it wasn't for, I would say, the benefit and the appreciation. I've had one to stay because my husband had many, many opportunities to move. But we stayed because of my job here. And if you eliminate a reason for people to want to come to work and enjoy their job and you see a lot of the public appreciate the services that we give them. We have customers that come in, just, I know this is off the wall, but come in to see the decorations in our office. That's all paid for by me, I'm my pocket, my choice. But they enjoy coming in and seeing a welcoming situation. Fun-loving, welcoming situation. If you start eliminating and taking away from your employees, you're gonna find a big change. And yes, we can be replaced, like everybody wants to say. But there's a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience and it takes a lot of time to get there. And between there and now or now and there, you're gonna find a lot of mistakes and problems that US county have to back and support if there is. So I guess as an employee of thirty-one years, thirty-six to county government, I would hope people would, you would think about your employees. If you want good service and you want good feedback from your public, don't forget your employees who help you get your jobs too. Thank you. And you're only looking at two percent compared to however much. And you already haven't been paid for insurance. So those people went backwards, literally backwards.
Yeah.
Not only backwards in pay, but also backwards and having to pay insurance on top of it. Not that they, I don't think they would have a problem paying insurance, although that was part of the package deal of when you applied for your jobs. But you're taking income away besides. And if budget is such a problem, then this is our main job. this is our main job, that your guys' is your second job. Why isn't your salaries considered? If we're having to suffer our salaries as a main job?
I cut a twenty-five thousand dollar bu- benefit too.
I, well, thank you. I appreciate that. But obviously it wasn't enough to help all the budgets.
Well, I guess as a board, we talked about this a lot during budget time and getting to this point, so I guess, where's, where's everyone's thoughts at? I.
I don't, I'm just gonna make a motion to re-estate the two percent raise. See if anyone's second sense.
And what does that entail for all employees?
Yes, except for the supervisors.
elected officials as well?
Yes. But otherwise, your deputies won't get a raise.
The deputies won't get a raise if you have that elected, that would make sense.
This would exclude the union contract with secondary roads as well, correct, or is this?
They, they already got a raise.
They already have, they already have.
They're, they have to be.
So all employees outside of that, is that everything?
So all employees are unaffected by the union.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second for a sacred discussion. Do we know about figure what that would look like?
Two hundred and fifty?
Off top of my head. I forget what it was.
Yeah, I'd say that somewhere around there, I don't know for sure.
Some of those come from different levies, is that considered in that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar move? Or is it a lower number than that?
Phil's can come from a different levy.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, not all part of, um, employee payroll comes out of general basic, you got some that comes out of rural too.
Secondary road department would be the only thing, otherwise sheriff that comes out of that. Sheriff payroll does not come out of general.
Aaron would be about it, wouldn't he?
Yeah, we commission and sanitary.
Right.
The majority of it would be general basic and then BMS, secondary levy.
Oh, I, I make a retroactive sort of, why do we legalize? Just define these pledges.
Yeah.
I guess I, I think it's premature to act on something that we don't, don't even know how to affect our funds, um, and with no discussion about
Well, we still have to put it in a budget amendment, so this isn't, it isn't the end of it, but this year we'd get it into the budget amendment whenever we do it. You can still vote against it at that time, I guess, but I think it's right to bring it up today, we don't have to nix it today.
My thought is, is I would like to see the numbers on paper, and we have the motion to get to that point.
Is there a desire in the board to offset those expenses elsewhere, or just lower the fund balance?
What is the projected fund balance, Tammy?
Which fund?
General basic.
Let me look.
I don't need that.
We didn't worry about that, and we did the libraries, economic development, and the chair, what, on the dollars.
It was all talked about.
Yes, we did worry about it.
It wasn't a different fund.
Did we?
It's coming out of the, the rural basic.
It's in a different fund.
Yeah.
But the library is. Rural basic doesn't have a wonderful balance either. I think that hasn't passed yet either.
Nope.
Yeah, that's still in discussion on, on budget.
You know, remember, we are voters too. Just like the fair board and the library, I'm not saying they didn't deserve their money. And I know times are tough and budgets are tough. But we are people too, just like the fair board and the library people, that depend on you guys. And we vote for you guys too. And we talk just like they talk. So if it wasn't a problem, and I know it's a different funding, but you came up with money for them, why not us? Cause we're employees, we're not only employees, we are people in your county, just like they are. So when you go to vote, think about that too.
It's loading a little bit.
Technology's fine, right?
Haven't dropped the phone back.
Yeah.
If I can make a quick comment here, um, I'm while Tammy's looking for that. I can't speak for all the department heads, but as a department head, what's frustrating for me is are we gonna be in the same position next January and February when we are doing workshops? If you can't answer something now in July, how are you gonna answer it in January or February? Maybe we need to start having workshops now. I can tell you what your any fund balance is, it's seven-point-three million. It's right here in the handout that you gave out to all the people. So we're estimated to have a seven-point-three-million-dollar any fund balance on June thirtieth.
No, that's changed because of our beginning fund balance has changed.
So it's changed since April of twenty-four?
Yeah, because that's just an estimated because.
So let's project, what is it now then?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Okay. It's, it's still. My point is, as department head, it's hard for us to retain good employees when we don't have answers. I'm three deputies short right now, one for retirement, so we can't help that. The other two, we lost two young deputies that are in their late twenties, early thirties. And in the accident review, it's because uncertainty of raises, now having to pay a portion of the family insurance, and the unknowns. They can go next door and make thirty thousand more a year. So I think as a department head, we need to have a organization from the board to know how we're gonna recruit and retain good employees when we don't have answers. When I got employees retired, how do I answer them, well, this is what we're gonna offer you for a package? This is what we're gonna offer you for a wage. Right now, I've got three positions open, and after testing, I'll be lucky if I have anybody qualified to hire for them. And right now, I can't give an honest answer, I don't know what your benefit package is gonna be. I'm not certain what your wage package is gonna be, and I'm not certain what your wages are gonna be in the future as far as potential raises. One of the things that I've been here, as she mentioned here, I've been here thirty-seven years, and this is the first time that I've regretted that we don't have a union. And that's pretty hard for me to say that because I wouldn't support it with unions. But now we lost a union, and now all of a sudden we're gonna start paying health insurance packages. And for the thirty-seven years I was here, we averaged a one-and-a-half to two-and-a-half percent pay raise because of benefits. And we were okay with that. And every employee that worked there was okay with that because we knew we had that benefit of health insurance. And I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna speak for myself because I'm in a position where it doesn't matter to me, but I have twenty-five people under me that the morale gets pretty low when they know, well, am I, am I gonna get a pay raise next year? And what more am I gonna be paying on my pocket? They took a three-thousand-dollar hit this year and a zero percent pay raise. So now when I do have applicants coming in, that's one of the first questions I get. And this is what I'm also noticing, I'm not having the citizens of Kusu County line up at my door taking an application.
We are taxpayers too.
If it's, uh, if, if those people that come to you and say, well, you're paying too much to employees, why aren't they lining up on my door taking an application? We've gotta stay competitive, we've gotta stay to be able to provide that service. And I can't speak for their department heads, but I can speak for mine because we're open seven days a week. And we're getting to a point now where, you know, right now, I don't know if you guys even heard that, we're three deputies short, and I got another one that fractured his wrist, that's probably gonna be out for six weeks. So remember when I joked with you last year that I might need your phone numbers, when we started deputizing you? We're real close to that. So we gotta be able to project out there, promote Kusu County, what are we gonna offer employees? And if I can't do that as a department head, I need help from you as the board of supervisors. If we can't even get an answer where we're not projecting any fund balances, or where is it gonna come out of? That's not our job as a department head, that's yours as supervisors. Maybe we need to start having workshops in August, September, instead of waiting until January and February. Cause this is when I gotta hire, I need to hire now, not, not wait till January or February and then be able to have answers for what's gonna happen with raises or benefit packages.
Well, the other thing, the private sector's wages have to increase a lot faster than what the counties have.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not just Kusu County, it's everywhere.
Right.
But as employees, we take that, you know, that average of the inflation rates and everything costing up an average of twenty percent. But when your wages freeze or your benefits are reduced, it's hard to retain and recruit good employees. And I, I, we still got two weeks left of our applications opening, but right now I think we've had five return. And out of that, we're gonna average fifty percent that won't make the, meet the necessary requirements on the civil service testing. So I may not even have enough applicants to fill the positions, is what I'm saying. And it's real hard when people are scrolling through there, and they're looking at areas that are within fifty miles of us, and there's a thirty percent difference in wage, or a big difference in benefit package, or there's hiring incentives. And there's different things and options that other counties are looking at. I think I mentioned to you a few months ago that we've gotta look at the ability to not require our employees to live in Kusu County anymore for deputies. We gotta take a serious look at that, because right now, all the other areas, uh, El Gona's got an officer that drives from Mesterville. He lives in Mesterville and drives down here to come and do it. Hancock County and the other neighboring counties have deputies that drive in and, and report to duty. So we've gotta be able to expand that so that we don't, our restrictions to just, not only are we gonna not know what we're gonna pay you and not know what your benefit package is, but we're gonna make you come live here too. So we gotta have the answers to be able to recruit, retain good employees. And that's what I get nervous about as a department head, is how am I gonna recruit, retain good employees when there's the uncertainties? Especially when, when I have employees that come in and say, well, we already reduced two-hundred-and-fifty a month on health, family health insurance, and then we're hearing that that's just the beginning. Is, is next year's gonna be five hundred a month reduced, seven hundred a month? We don't know. And it's real hard to compete. Uh, again, I'm not speaking for the other department heads, but for mine, it's real hard to compete when you can go anywhere around the area and not have that concern. Hancock County deputies just got a pay raise, they're up to a hundred-and-three-thousand base salary. So I've got eight deputies over here going, wow, I can make thirty thousand dollars and drive twenty-five miles and not have to live over there. And they got an opening right now, and I've got three deputies that are going to apply. Just found that out last night. So we're in that position where you guys are gonna have to make some serious answers for us as a department head. How do I answer when applicants come in? What do I tell them?
The, the guys that are applying over there are guys that have been here forever, and they're the top, they're our top guys, right?
Well, they're more experienced guys.
Yeah, more experienced. It's a big problem.
Well, if you don't pay market, you're not gonna get good employees.
No.
That's just sad fact.
Especially when you have specialized jobs, everything in this courthouse is specialized. You got training on our side of the street, you're have, have the special requirements, the certifications that you have to have. And when a person goes through all that, you expect to be rewarded at some point. Okay, I'm putting forth all this effort, but yeah, I just got a three-thousand-dollar reduction in pay and a zero percent raise. Cause that's what it is, three-thousand-dollar hit to your insurance is a reduction in pay. That's now two-hundred-and-fifty a month they won't have in their paycheck. That could have paid the utility bill or mortgage straight, towards mortgage stage. So how are we gonna get five-thousand-dollar increase in your deductible? So it's thirty-five hundred. Exactly. And the two percent raise that we're discussing doesn't even bring back half of that, it's still a downwind.
It's a normal forty-five-thousand-dollar wage, it don't amount to that.
So my whole point of bringing up this discussion is, here we are in July, we've got a brand-new budget. So are we gonna wait till January, as far as department heads come in and start discussing what we do for the next budget?
Roger, part of the problem is, we won't know how much money we have coming in until we have valuations. And that's not done till the end of the year, so until we know how much money we're gonna raise in taxes, it's kinda hard to know how much can be spent. That's why it doesn't get done until later in the year.
I understand that part of it, but if it's projected at seven-point-three, where do we think it's gonna come in then?
But we, and what I'm saying is, we don't know how much is gonna be raised in taxes because of this new senate file, and where we could be limited to how much, what our levy rates are, we won't know until that happens.
House file seven-eighteen.
That's next year, not this year.
Isn't so the.
Yeah, but he's talking about doing budget workshops, and I think that's why we have to wait.
Hard to do workshops until January. Well, it's also hard to recruit, retain good employees when we don't have answers to give them.
I sympathize with you a hundred percent.
I mean, it's, I understand that position, but it's difficult both ways.
Chris?
Aren't the taxes that are gonna be collected for the, this budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five taxes coming in for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Those are based off of the twenty-three values? So the twenty-four values are already set? So.
Right, but we won't know until our valuations are done with the state, and then they tell us what our levy rates.
Okay, so you don't get the, the levy rate stuff from the state till then?
Right, yes.
Sorry. Just confirming, I guess.
So I would encourage you as board of supervisors to meet with your neighboring supervisor and see how they do it. How is Hancock and Winnebago County able to provide such a higher salary for their? How is Hancock and Winnebago County able to provide such a higher salary for their staff when they're half the size of our county? That's where I get confused. And I probably need to educate myself better too, but as supervisors, maybe you need to visit with their supervisors. How do you guys project what your budget's gonna be? How are you able to pay this much of a higher salary? I mean, they obviously have to have their workshops over there too and determine what they're gonna do and what their tax rates are. But here we got two counties neighboring to us that are half our size and have the same amount of employees that I have as the sheriff's department and are able to pay them thirty percent higher. And one of them does have a jail.
It's big, the two Hancock County supervisors about that very thing.
And what's the answer?
Not having a jail there makes a significant impact in their budget.
They pay a portion of Winnebago's expenses.
I understand that, but it's it's drastically lower though.
Right.
Yeah. I think their expense portion is three hundred some thousand dollars if I remember right, as far as portion they paid to Hancock in the past, or into Winnebago in the past year. And as opposed to, well, our jail budget is one point some million, I I forget how much. Exactly, but so there's a significant difference there too in their in their budget process.
But Winnebago pays their deputies higher wage scale than we do and they have a brand new jail, so we can't really make that argument.
I was just saying I've spoken to Hancock County and that was the answer I got.
They just built a brand new jail over there, neighboring county.
Yeah, I don't know what that cost was, brand new.
Five and a half million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think they're not gonna retain employees if you don't give raises and build freedom, but the respect that they're due.
One quick comment, two weeks ago, I was here and it was recorded, you can go back and listen to the recording. But I was told that we are going to stick to the budget numbers as put together through the budgeting process. I went back and told my employees, we're not changing anything because the board supervisors are gonna stick to the numbers during budget season. Last week, the doors opened and two hundred thousand went off the door. How do I go back to after today if you broke this down and explained to my employees that once again, you're shot down? My morale's gonna just bottom out.
I'm gonna call for the vote, it's a roll call, do a reverse roll call, you three guys gonna deal with this in the next budget.
So for calling for the question, this is one of the things that was discussed in the parliamentary procedure session. Uh, calling for the question requires a vote, so we will.
As before.
In parliamentary procedure, calling for the question is something that's voted on whether we end discussion or not. So I would ask for a roll call vote for calling the question.
I'll write this down.
To end discussion?
To end discussion.
We're not.
Or continue discussion is the decision at hand.
I will say that as Robert's rules of order, we've never done that before, but.
Okay, so roll call vote to end discussion and call for a roll call vote on the motion.
It's calling for the question is the motion, yep.
Okay.
Do we have a reverse roll call?
That was a different thing you were asking about, this is still whether we end debate or not.
Okay, Plath?
Yes, yes.
Jerks?
Yeah, we'll end debate.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Stecker?
No. So debate has ended, um, the question has been called. There was a reverse roll call requested, so.
Okay, Stecker?
You'd start with Carter and then Josh and I'd be, I'd still be last on a reverse.
Okay, Nath?
For the main motion?
Yes.
Can you read the motion?
Can you?
The most, motion by Jerk, second by Wacter, to reinstate two percent raise for all employees except supervisors and those in a union and make it retroactive to July's payroll.
Good.
Nath?
No.
Wacter?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Plath?
Pass.
Stecker?
Pass.
Plath?
I'll say yes, I don't have to deal with the next budget, so I think those, the ones who are here have to deal with it.
Stecker?
No. And that would pass three to two, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that will be.
That's to prepare for the budget amendment though, that's not a.
Well, your your motion was to reinstate the raise, retroactive to July.
But it did state though that that.
It was discussed for a budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
What has to go to?
Well, he discussed it, but that wasn't part of the motion.
It has to go to the budget amendment.
It's not final until then, yeah.
Okay.
It's passed, it reinstated.
Okay, so I don't know how we're gonna do payroll in July.
We can't do it in July and be reinstated with a budget amendment.
There's no way we can do a budget amendment by the end of July.
No, I know that.
Yeah, I can do payroll Wednesday.
Yeah.
Function functionally, this just doesn't work.
Well, maybe I have to project the July part.
I mean.
Yeah.
I still have money in the budget for to cover the two percent until the end of the budget season, so I don't know why I can't cover to July and.
Because technically it's not official until we do the budget amendment.
Can't spend what's not budgeted.
Right.
So that's my understanding of.
Well, you can you can do the two percent for the July raise in August, after you do the budget amendment.
I guess we need to be careful auditing wise how how we go about it.
There's there's so many questions that are unanswered with this, I.
I thank you for that comment, Kyle, because that's how I was department head still. We've got so many questions that are unanswered. Uh, I feel like I accomplished nothing in the workshops last January and I have no idea what we're gonna accomplish next January. I don't know what to tell future employees and current employees. Are we stuck at zero percent for quite a few years here? Are we stuck at benefit reductions for the next few years? I don't know what we're supposed to, what direction we're supposed to get. Cause when I do employee interviews, that's the first question they're gonna get, what benefit package are we offering? What's our potential wage salary or potential increases down the road?
Melissa?
So did you, when you guys did decided the dollar amount or the percent of taxes that were going up for Cassuth County, did you guys do the max? That you could tax Cassuth County people?
For which fund?
Any of them, general basic, the one we're talking about.
Yeah, we're maxed out.
Yeah.
So we we taxed the max to the vote to taxpayers?
Yes.
General basic and rural basic.
Think you gotta, heck, you gotta do the maximum to have the supplement.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I just would like to echo Sheriff Fisher's comments. Uh, retaining, recruiting employees is difficult. The road department, we're fighting that as well, and I have answered a lot of questions. And I know that the road department employees, as well as the sheriff's deputies, have a lot of concerns and they would like to have some sort of an idea of what the board has an idea for in the future. And talking with other county engineers, a lot of staff in the state of Iowa and other counties received what I would call significant greater than five percent increases in wages. So Cassuth County seems to be a little bit, uh, not normal. And I will have some more information for you once our salary survey is complete and I'll be presenting that to the board also, but it would be some guidance to department heads. We've asked for priorities, where where do you want your priorities and spending to go? You talk about reducing expenditures. And in government, reducing expenditures means reducing services, it's pretty simple. So what is the highest priority service? What is the lowest priority service? And the board, if you guys are gonna cut expenditures, you have to give us, department heads, what that priority is. We need to be able to speak about that. And I've not heard yet, we've been asking for it since, I think it was April, maybe the end of March. Still have not received any kind of priority in spending. So we we need guidance for retainage, for recruitment. We also need guidance, so if you wanna reduce expenditures, where are you gonna reduce them at?
A little bit as a, that that goes back to our discussion before, you were asking for micromanaging of your department. And that, if you're gonna look for budget cuts, that should be you as a department head bringing that to the board for a discussion, not the board telling you where to cut your budget, because then that's making us micromanagers of your budget. That's the same problem we had before that got us in trouble with you and your budget because people were trying to micromanage your your budget. So you as a department head have to find those cuts. You can't have it both ways, if you want employees to get more money, then yeah, if there isn't enough tax dollars, we've got we've got to do, uh, cut expenditures.
And and that's fine, Jack, but when you have a, for example, snow removal, when the ordinance for snow removal says five o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, seven days a week, and the county engineer decides, well, we're not gonna pay any overtime for snow removal to save money, reduce expenditures, I would hope, being the county engineer, that the board of supervisors would right away say, yes, thank you for cutting that expenditure. Or you gotta say, snow removal is high and mowing grass on roads is not, but yet when the public comes in and says, why are roads not being mowed? Say, we have reduced expenditures and this is how we are going to reduce service, to reduce those expenditures. We cannot, it's impossible to provide the same service on the same dollar that we had five years ago. It's impossible. Geez, you look at what the equipment purchases have done in the last five years. You look at what construction costs have done. And I remind the board, you know, some of the things we've talked about. We don't even in our five-year program have a bridge that is on a gravel road, eleven hundred miles of roadway, programmed to be replaced. And when that bridge fails, which we just spoke about, a bridge on the north side of section five of Laverne Township, or the bridge located right, the Big Cobra right to the east of Albona, that gets storm damage, comes out of the maintenance budget, but it should be replaced. We're gonna throw, we're gonna throw all this new money into an old bridge, we're gonna be finished up with an old, we're gonna have an old bridge. And next year, if the ice takes it out, what do we do? We threw away whatever money it takes to repair it. So we need some guidance.
Yeah, just good, yeah, thank you for your thoughts, Doug, and and everyone else, just kind of bringing this back to you as far as well, we just finished employee raise and discussion on health insurance policy is next on the agenda, maybe this is a good time. And Doug requested it a couple of weeks ago, I think, and we, as a board, gave a wishy-washy answer. Maybe we can give direction as far as where we wanna go with health insurance. Some sort of guidance as far as what the board's intended is for the coming year.
We just figured out first things that we can't, we can't give the race in July.
Let's come back to that first.
Let's amend the motion that I made, and I make it for August, April.
Okay, so we have to, the amendment we have to post for ten to twenty days before we have the hearing.
Right.
Okay, so, but then remember that when we publish this, it's quite expensive to publish these notices. So if you do one in August, do a budget amendment in August, are you still gonna have another one in October and another one in the spring? Because now you're talking more expenses again.
Reason we did this was to get it all in the same budget amendment.
Okay, then, I mean, we're in August, we're not gonna know what else we need. That's only two months into our budget.
It would have to wait until September. But we're gonna do a budget amendment for the fair and for the other economic development.
We didn't, we didn't do a budget amendment for those.
We haven't yet, I mean, you tell me what you wanna do, I'm just letting you know that if you do keep doing these, the expenses add up.
Correct.
And all of this is coming out of your fund balance, so you're lowering what you're gonna have the beginning of next year.
Correct. But you also have to keep in place.
Yeah, I I'm I'm, of course, but I'm just.
Amy's saying you have an audit.
We can throw all kinds of roadblocks up to this, but still, they still, the employees deserve the raise being that we took away health insurance and.
And I absolutely agree with that.
But.
We just have to do it.
Make so many roadblocks, because I think there is a way to do it. I don't think we're gonna be able to do it until, starting in September.
If we can't, if we can't approve the budget amendment before then, you know, we won't be able to do it.
Well, you can do it in, you know, August, we could get it done and get it done in August, but then are you gonna have to do another one come October, November? And then another one in the spring, that's my concern, is just making you aware.
Active, you don't make any more changes to the budget.
And the reason for budget amendments typically is for unknown expenses or things that were forgotten or things that come up that you're not expecting. So, um, you just never know.
Like I said, you're you're trying to look into the crystal ball, you just you just have to deal with what's at hand right now. You gotta do a budget amendment for this, you have to do it when you do it and worry about the rest of it if that comes up later.
Okay.
Okay?
Tell me, tell me when.
They should amend the motion to, and add the two percent after the budget amendment. Are you okay with that, Kyle? Yeah, okay, we'll amend the motion to reinstate to two percent after the budget amendment is passed.
So that's a new motion to amend the previous action?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Josh?
Oh, no, I'll second, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this?
And you want me to start that budget amendment right now, is that what you're saying?
Is there anything else we're gonna check into as far as auditing stuff with Elizabeth? Or, I mean, are are we gonna check into anything else or just publish notes in paper?
Well, it's a big part, this will be part of the amendment process, it's checking.
It's checking with her.
No, we don't.
That's not part of the amendment process. But you may make it a part of it for this time. You want to, your motion again to include that.
What are we including?
What are we?
What Kyle was saying, I was checking with her, auditing.
I'm not.
You said.
That was just.
This will be in the same budget amendment as the library, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that better for?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? And Tammy, can you restate the motion?
To, motion by Jerk, second by Wactor, to amend the previous motion to reinstate two percent. Um, and I'll put all employees except supervisors and those in the union after the budget amendment is done.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
No.
Plath, or Stucker, sorry.
No. All right, motion carries three to two. Is there anything further for that topic on the board? Okay, just wanted to double check.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you, three.
Yeah. All right, um, discussion on our health insurance policy, we had to.
Yep.
Do we all get summary benefits or is it just one copy?
It's just you.
Okay.
Anybody that has insurance got the summary benefits.
Okay, okay, yep.
And that's just an update in YouTube.
Okay.
They did have that approved in the press. So it's really not a significant change. It's just we're obligated to hand it out.
Yep.
It was irrelevant to this conversation.
Okay, I didn't know if that was provided.
It was just handed out from employees for insurance. It's irrelevant to, I'm sorry, computer's, it's not related to that.
So then did you, you guys got the copies too?
Yep.
Okay. Well, um.
We had your, your fund balance estimate that, and you might, I guess, you came, you got it estimated to be two point nine eight. Well, I can't remember what the, what the fund balance is.
It actually ended at is two point six million.
Went from three point two to two point six.
It was down about six hundred thousand or so.
Six hundred forty-four thousand, yep.
And while you stop, then you need to, you might, you need to stay around three million. This one, this one shot more stuff in the business, so that was a fund balance.
I think, I put it on the book because I think there should be some discussion. I put it on the agenda, some discussion on what you really plan to do with health insurance. People have asked me, employees, what do you really plan to do with insurance? Plan on keeping it as it is or you're going to go to a high deductible plan? Are you going to make them pay more for insurance next year? Those are questions that they want to answer now before they seek employment somewhere else.
Well, I think, I think you got to have Walmart come in and explain. Explain what has the greatest impact on the bottom line? Does a high deductible, paying employees paying more? You need to know what, what has the greatest impact. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't know enough about it to know which avenues have the greatest impact. A lot of two, I mean, at this stage, I think you got to let it play out now with employees' opinion. And, and we got, we got a little bit less money going into the, into the program. But the two point six or seven million, that greatly, somewhat large, but not seriously large with that amount. I think we're still okay. And I think you got to let this kind of play out a little bit and see where we're at, you know, going into the first of the year. And then I think if you're going to have this discussion, I think you need to have Walmart here to talk to you about choices and changes and what has, what's going, what's going to impact it the greatest. Because I, I'm not smart enough to know what, what changes is going to impact it the most. Maybe a high deductible is a, is a big impact to it, I don't know. Or just raising the deduct, raising the deductible. I guess you got to have, you got to have the actuary or from Walmart kind of explain it to you. Give you maybe some direction of what's, what's the, maybe your choices is what's going to have the greatest impact on it. I think we're anywhere close to making a decision on what changes to make at this stage until we get more information out of it. Except for looking at two point six, two point seven million fund balance. Yeah, that's dropping it down, but I'm not overly worried about it yet. So it's getting down to two million, yeah, I just, we started getting very worried about it. But I would feel a lot more comfortable having Walmart come in and explain those options and what's going to impact it the greatest.
Didn't Walmart come in and explain that? And that's why the deductible was raised this last time? We were two fifty and we had to pay two fifty, didn't they already come in and discuss that?
Gave it, not, yeah, they gave us some. I mean, we're talking about other, other changes that, you know, like higher deductibles or, or, um, employees paying more, I mean, those are all things, like, we got to have more information. They made some changes right now, we haven't even had, had a chance to see how they play out. We don't know what the, what the impact's going to be on the, on the, on the fund balance.
Yeah, so, I mean, we had talked about some of this last couple meetings of having Walmart come up um, in the near future. So I guess I have no issue waiting until that to discuss more. But yeah, with the changes we made this last year, changing stop loss and those other pieces, I, I think we need to see some actual data and impacts of how that affects our financial picture moving forward. We can't, we can't even try to see any of those impacts when we haven't gotten information one way or the other. I think Doug kind of talked about that, so.
Your plan then on insurance is not doing anything until January or February? Because that's before you're going to have any numbers. It's going to be January or February before you decide what you're going to do with insurance.
I think maybe in December, you know, maybe, before it's like, we need to, before Doug brings some numbers in, showing you where we're at, look at December, get ready for January.
The problem is, we won't have numbers from, from Walmart on.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the fund balance numbers and the, and the, the expenses and the, those things.
Right, how are we going to know what our expenses are? You don't.
Doug, did you?
They do them all?
I, no. I was, during discussion with county engineer and discussion with zoning administrator, discussion, I had contacted Walmart and I'd like them to come up July twenty-third to talk about high deductible plans, educate the board a little bit about what exactly the high deductible plans are.
Yep.
And then also the benefits to employees and the benefits to the fund. Will July twenty-third work out for the board to have a workshop with Walmart?
Tammy, what's on our?
Informational.
We have, we're busy. We have a public hearing for PAK one and the workshop with EMA, EMS, Sheriff, me, nine one one in the afternoon. So the, the hearing isn't until ten o'clock, so, I mean, if you did something before that, like nine o'clock.
I think I'll move to the twenty, the thirtieth.
I'm going to, I'll be gone last weekend, so for the group of the, let me speak about this.
How about?
Office six.
Six, yeah.
How about having a separate meeting for this where we only address health insurance and we have a specific topic?
I think that's a good idea because the thirtieth and the sixth, we have drainage meetings both those days.
How, what's that? Yeah, I, I thought we had drainage means for a little while. Um, does anyone have any issues with Monday?
We're doing the afternoon, right?
Well, the twenty-third in the afternoon.
Yeah, we will be busy in the afternoon.
And all, all of those days, the thirtieth at one o'clock and the sixth at one o'clock, so.
Okay, we can, we can do it on Monday, Monday.
Phil, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. So when you're looking at the high deductible plans we discussed last year, that's as a, as a second option not to replace what we currently have, just to clarify. So we don't have much with employees also.
Yeah.
We're dropping what we have and going to high deductible. So we're adding options for employees.
Yeah, it, yep. Doug, do you know if you have any, um, issues with the twenty-second?
I could, I'll have to visit with our Walmart rep to see what their schedule is.
I think the twenty-second of Monday or the twenty-fourth of Wednesday, I think, both would potentially work, so for me.
One o'clock in the afternoon?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
My point is you can't spring high deductible insurance plan on the twelfth.
Well, yeah, we need time to educate and.
In visiting a little bit with Walmart, there's a lot of things that need to be done. We got, the board needs to be educated what it is, what, what benefits there are for the employee and if there are any benefits for the fund. And then if the board decides to move forward with this, Walmart is willing to set up some workshops for employees to educate them as well. So that they, employees can make a decision whether or not this is a good, good alternative for themselves. So there's education, there's discussion that needs to take place. And this would be the first step in that discussion, that education.
I, yeah, I think, I think that would be our best course of action.
So plan tentatively the twenty-second, uh, one o'clock.
Well, let's just, let's just let.
Depending what Doug.
Just let Doug coordinate with Walmart and see if we can get a date that works for them. Does anyone have any issues with Wednesday as a second alternative? From the board?
I got to work both days on this afternoon.
Okay. Jack, do you have any issues there? Okay. So, um, all right, well, let's move on from there. We have, and we have a conference call with PAC, for PAC one here.
Thank you all, thank, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Joshua, we're still reading what I've lost.
On the twenty-third?
Twenty-third?
This is the twenty-third, is it?
Yeah, the twenty-third.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It's danger, all right? I got a camera.
No construction? There is no construction in the road right away.
Do you, do you have stuff that's fairly quick, you feel, Doug?
I can just give you some information, I guess.
Okay, yep.
Um, I don't think it's going to take very long.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, water over the roads, we still have one location, uh, that is impacted. It happens to be one mile north, a Highway nine right in the west. The west county line over to P sixteen. The project south of Titanca has completed and it's open. There are rock approaches next year. We let those sit over the sun, over the winter. Next year, we'll be getting them patched. Uh, the bridge on Bold Hobarton Road, uh, all the substructure is in. And they're forming the deck for that, so in a couple of weeks, hopefully in July, we will be, uh, there'll be pouring a deck on that. Resurfacing, uh, all the shouldering work is complete. Uh, traffic marking is scheduled for today, so we are thinking that the resurfacing will be completed today. Drainage District sixty sub four, the boring, they are attempting to get going on that again today, my understanding, or this week, excuse me. And then south of Burt, there was a tile installed and that has been completed. A reminder, and Tammy, we need to visit a little bit, but we have received documents, signed documents for the road easements for Michelson Marsh, so we need to get a, um, and then some sort of loan. I don't know what type of loan you want to get, uh, in order to construct that bridge. I'm working on our annual, the secondary road annual over in Ford. Right now, uh, planning and zoning, I apologize, I failed to get, uh, notice to the papers for last night's meeting. It's rescheduled for August five. We will take care of and, uh, put the item on for August sixth.
Four o'clock.
That is for four o'clock, yes. And we discussed the self-insurance, so that's all that I have.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, we got a couple minutes, do we want to get the phone set up for the conference call? Are they calling into our line?
I don't know, I'll have to check it.
Yeah, have Marge let us know.
Where's, can we have the number?
Colin?
Morning, Colin.
Morning.
I saw, I think, Marge brought stuff in here this morning. I still haven't seen any of that.
Yeah, I do have copies of it as well.
Thank you.
You been getting calls since now?
I haven't.
Okay.
I kind of thought, I have. I, I wondered about that, I was going to ask.
Got quite a few. Which is good.
Yeah, it was. I kind of figured that when I put the notice together, because it had, it's not that I was realistically going to recommend a three million dollar project, but it, I think regardless, since there's going to be some, some dollars involved in this, so.
Well, I think that's why we have this put together, is even if we took care of all of the spots individually, it's still going to be a significant cost.
How, Tom, see what you, Tom? You're new there, I didn't tell you before.
Yeah, well, I haven't done a lot in Cassous County. Um, I actually, I used to, I, I worked for Bolton Bank for a while in, out of Spencer.
Yeah.
And so I was, I got off this here, you know, along, I wasn't doing much in the south of Cassous County. But I'm from Estreville area, so I started on the James West Guard, it should have been two and a half years ago.
Morning, Marge.
Good on you.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
I guess I can ask it here. Doesn't matter. So with what happened? So what has to happen next? Like, what's the procedure? Like, he gave us the, the, um, kind of the library procedure because you've approved it. So now they have to.
Colin, she has to put her budget in, but it's gonna be the report.
So Tammy has to write it, get it to the paper. Publish. Twenty days.
I think it's like twenty days.
Kyle's at twenty.
Not, not less than ten, no more than twenty, I believe.
That's gonna be a whole thing. And I think I've kind of set up.
Twenty, twenty days waiting period. After ten to twenty days, you have a hearing.
Yep, public hearing, public hearing and discussion in the room. And, and I was gonna, but you know, I just got back at five o'clock this morning from taking notice dates. I wasn't, I'll, I'll give you a call back.
Oh, no worries, no worries. That I think is published or will soon. But um, no problem. Thanks. Um. So secondary roads, it's part of the collective bargaining, right? So they're excluded and then you guys are excluded, right?
Correct.
Is there anyone else that's in a collective bargaining that would not be covered? So it's just secondary roads?
There are other employees that have other boards and stuff. So there, there are some helpful nuances to that, but that's what was discussed in the meeting is just where.
For example, emergency management has their own commission.
Oh, okay.
So her board, her commission would set her salary. So we don't have a say in how they give you that money, kind of like the libraries, you know, your, your allocation.
And the problem is though is that they haven't already done it and all that and stuff. That's already damaged.
So emergency management is because they have their own boards and they're not included. Secondary roads is in the collective bargaining. They're not included. And then you guys. Thank you.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me. Um, and basically we've got it all surveyed out.
Is it on their letterhead?
The AT, no, the AT and T.
Oh, the AT and T numbers up for Calale. They're calling in. We just need to open it up so they can call us.
We're not calling really directly.
No, we just need to open it up.
Okay, okay. So just call the AT and T line?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and it really was. There was, it was all close and like sloughed out or it sat on the bottom, but that could change though.
So it was showing expenses because we haven't calculated the other most many ever until after we're all closed down.
Welcome to your AT and T. How's coverage service?
So once we do that, that will show us.
You can wrap, you can wrap.
Okay, but we did the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it just can't be done in the solutions.
It's just not in your system. That makes sense.
We're not the host. We are the host.
Yeah, we are the host.
It was all asked the same act and we didn't know this opened this year. We guess it was out and happened. So I'm just gonna go ahead and make this transition issue. I mean, it's still a function.
There are two participants on the call, including you, who are joining your conference as the host for a minute and press star pound.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Paul Alco.
Yes, we can hear you.
For this. The full board here, uh, Carmen and Jordan from the receptionist office, uh, the paper and Elita King, our, uh, what's that? Our zoning coordinator, so.
All right, we have our full board here, auditor and drainage clerk, Colin's here, uh, one landowner and currently the newspaper, but I think she said now. We are, we are ready to go. Colin, if you wanna kick us off?
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Um, so a few weeks ago, uh, we had filed uh the, the engineer's report for joint DD one for the main open ditch. And kind of at that time, if you remember some of that discussion, I talked about anticipating filing an amendment at a later date, that's today. Kind of going into more detail on this potential uh alternative option for sloping the banks back on a portion of the ditch. Kind of as an alternative to um rip wrap or just bank shape. So basically, um, just taking those bank slopes that are fairly steep and then just making them flatter so they're more stable. And we looked, initially we thought, well, maybe just the whole ditch, but um if you look on the back page of this amendment, I'm in Palo Alto County, I, I did send that in an email. Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right. So the last, the last, very last page, there's a map. Um, and it looks like there's a lot of stuff going on, but basically the biggest thing to point out is that red portion of the ditch versus the blue is the, on the, on the north end, on the upper end. The red portion is what we're looking at as far as um flattening the bank slopes or sloping the banks back. So that's, that's roughly two thirds of the length of the ditch. So that, I mean, and that did make a significant difference as far as um quantities of excavation and then overall cost. And basically, kind of the, we drew that boundary mostly based on the extent of damages. Up, up north of that point, there weren't nearly as bad of damages. And I think the soils, the soils are a lot better. The banks hold up a lot better um than further to the south.
It's not sand up there.
Right, right, exactly. Uh, let's see. Let's see whatever high points there was here. So maybe just skipping, skipping to the very end of it, I got a cost estimate for that. And so kind of going back to the originally filed engineer's report, there was two different options that we looked at and they're not like, oh, you pick one versus the other, but it kind of at least drew a picture of what might be a minimum and maximum amount of money that could be spent on repairs. Um, and the first option was basically if there was modern, anything above moderate, moderate to severe levels of, of bank sloughing, we'd be using rip wrap and the project cost estimate for that, we had was a little over three million dollars. Um, and then if we tried to just shake the banks back just on the, just in the damage locations everywhere we feasibly could, but in the most severe places, we still, we've gotta put rip wrap there, um, kind of as low as a little over one point five million. Uh, and then with this, we call it option three, to, to slope the banks back on the lower two thirds of the, the ditch. Uh, the lower twenty miles that is, um, about two point five million. And one thing I'll say is there's a, there's a significant quantity of open ditch excavation, almost two hundred and seventy two thousand cubic yards. And that unit price, I've got it two dollars and fifty cents a yard. Obviously, any little change in that makes a, a very big difference in the overall cost. And I've seen over by West Bend, we had a project in, in Palo Alto County there that a few years back that it was around the same amount of excavation. It was a dollar eighty a yard. Now, obviously, that would be higher now. But I'm hopeful that two fifty is on the high side, uh, just because it's so much excavation. But that, that right there is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the, of the estimate. So there's a potential big swing there depending on what we would get for a bid if we went with that option. And then with that, we would still, we would still be doing some, some rip wrap in the worst areas. Uh, a lot, there's, there's plenty of stretches that are long roads. So obviously, we're not gonna be sloping the banks back into the, into the roads. So those would have to be left alone. Um, so there'd be some rip wrap that we have to be putting there. Uh, still be doing some of the, the pipe repairs. Uh, and then, let's see, what's the other thing I wanted to mention about that? And kind of a main thing. Uh, then I wanted to get an update to on permitting, funding, and also have kind of a discussion about right of way. So if we, if we slope the banks back, obviously, there's gonna be some land that's lost to the channel. And with this, with this option, um, we're kind of estimating about thirty acres total. It's, it's interesting because that, that land, we're, it looks like all of that's gonna be within existing right of way. So in talking with Jim Hudson, I mean, that, the stuff that's within the existing right of way, it's the, the drainage district's discretion on how to use that. The question I had is if, if land is being lost to the channel, is there additional compensation that would be necessary for that? And he said, no, not technically, because it's already in the right of way of the district. However.
However, you got ASCS acres in there that are going to disappear.
That's correct. And I did, uh, oh, I'm forgetting his name now. The Passus County guy.
Brian.
Brian. I contacted Brian and just to give him a heads up that this is something that's a, a possibility. No decisions have been made yet. But he said, he acted like that's not a big deal. Basically, they just subtract those acres out of the, out of the contract. So it's not a concern that I would have is are they gonna be in violation or get penalties or something like that? And that's, that doesn't sound like it's the case.
Farmer revenues rather than.
Correct. Yep. Yep, yeah, those acres would come off that contract. So for that part, you wouldn't necessarily have to do any compensation. However, there's gonna be material that's dug out and you gotta kind of push it out wire. So it may, and especially some of that more gravelly sandy material may get pushed out beyond the existing right of way. So that's something I kind of had to think through. You know, do you consider acquiring additional right of way on the outside, um, fringes? And really, my, my conclusion was that it's probably best to handle that stuff on a case by case basis with damage reimbursements, basically as needed. The, the material in the ditch banks varies as you go. So you know, if it was just straight gravel and you have to dump it up on there, um, it's gonna be different than if you're pulling black earth. And, and in some places, it's probably not gonna extend beyond the existing right of way. I think it's, I guess my recommendation is it's kind of wait and see and then handle it on a case by case basis. But it's something, it's something definitely to be thinking about because it appears though, land is lost, revenue is lost, but it is, it's, it's right of way of the drainage district. It's just that um, landowners have the, have the right to beneficial use of that as long as the drainage district lets them kind of, if that makes sense.
You, you got areas in there where you're going to dump your gravel on top of productive ground though. So there will be damages beyond the scope of the easement.
Right, yeah. And I, and I did, I did include, I think like a hundred thousand or something in the cost estimate for, actually a hundred twenty thousand in the cost estimate for, for that sort of thing. And then permitting. So I've been working with the DNR. Um, I kind of had some concerns about this slope of the banks back and what the DNR would think about that flood plain permitting section. Um, and there's no final determinations on it, but we filed a permit application, have been talking with them, requested an expedited review uh, because it can take quite a while to get through their permitting process. Uh, but I said that every, every additional event that happens, there's more damages. And so we need to get this going. Um, but they've, they've tentatively indicated that a flood plain permit would be required, but it would, they're thinking it'd be a fairly straightforward process. So then if you're doing a channel change, that's kind of a big deal. And right now, they're not looking at it as a channel change permit. So that's, that's good news. And then the RV Corps, this is an interesting one. So as far as flattening the banks out, that's, that's not their jurisdiction. That's not within their purview. If you're adding fill, then that's when they, they get involved. And so if you're gonna do more than two thousand feet of rip wrap, um, in a project, they are saying that you need an individual permit, which is a minimum of a six month process to get through all that. I think, I think we got options as far as that goes. And I haven't applied for a permit with that because we haven't decided what we're gonna do. And the three different options we've got ranging from uh four thousand to thirty six thousand feet of, of bank that would be, have rip wrap put on it. Uh, so we kind of need to have a little bit more clarity, but at the same time, we want to know from the core, is there gonna be problems here? And they're saying that it's not a matter of, you know, the things that we wouldn't be able to get permitted. It's just the timing, the timing issue. Uh, so I, I guess if timing ended up being a huge deal, you know, if the bank, slope of the banks back option, option three, I've got around four thousand feet um for that, for that option. And we could consider limiting it to two thousand to try to avoid any delays or issues with, with the Corps. Um, alternatively, I think we could apply for the permit, um, go for bids and just put that in there that this could, this could change later. And then so as all that's going through the process, we're going through the process of getting a permit. And if it doesn't work out, we can always just um take some rip wrap off. So anyway, permitting has been a little bit of a, still an unknown. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping even in the next week, that there'll be more clarity before the hearing next Tuesday. And then I do just want to mention that and maybe some of you, it sounds like have been getting phone calls about this, but in twenty twenty four, like the, the, most of this stuff, actually all this stuff for these cost estimates is twenty twenty three damages. We went out there uh, in November and December of last year. And so that's what this is all based on. We have not had any success in uh finding any funding, outside funding to help pay for the twenty twenty three damages. However, we're aware that there have been some additional damages with this spring with the flooding that's taking place. And um there have been disaster declarations made. And I know Passus County, I think is, is eligible for public assistance category D, which would be this stuff uh under one of the disaster declarations. So basically, all that being said, if there's twenty twenty four damages, additional damages beyond what we've got here, basically, we would be doing everything in our power to get, to get funding for that. And that would be an eighty, eighty-five percent between state and federal.
Cost share.
Cost share. And it's too bad we couldn't get eighty-five percent of every, the whole project. But anyways, just wanted.
Your, your issue is that we have additional damage to the same spots that you had damage in
Right.
twenty-three. So you're gonna have to determine how much additional damage was done?
Yes, but I think we can do that. And, and the reason is. And, and the reason is, we physically went out there, I mean, we bolted make did a drone flight and we watched that. But then we went out there with GPS equipment and shot the beginning and ends of damages from twenty twenty-three. So if we go out there and we can recreate those, we can go back out there and go to those exact points. And if there's damages beyond that on those same sites, then we would consider that to be twenty twenty-four damages that may be eligible for, for this funding. So I think we're set up fairly well to be able to prove what damages occurred in what year.
Yep.
Um, so that's, that's a good thing, that we had that all in place before, before the spring. So any, any questions at all?
Well. Go ahead, Roger.
Just thinking out loud here, so if you want to flatten the bank slopes, we could say that, that decision was made because of the additional damages that were done in twenty twenty-four over twenty twenty-three, so they should pay more from the FEMA.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought.
So that, that is, that is, that is stuff that should be discussed and coordinated with Leon, in my opinion, because he was instrumental in helping us work through the paperwork for the nineteen disaster. And I went back to the, I found the bid tab while you were talking there, Colin, and, and this is what I was going to touch on. Um, the drain four project we had was two hundred and twenty-five thousand cubic yards of open ditch excavation. The low bid, which ended up doing the project, was a dollar seventy-five for excavation. The next lowest bid was a dollar eighty-five. So just the math on that, we could save about two hundred thousand if we reduce that price by seventy-five cents a unit. Um, so that also amplifies if we do more open ditch excavation and less riprap, that cost saving expands even more.
Yeah.
Um, and I would, I mean, obviously, we don't know until we get bids, but I would anticipate contractors being hungry for this size and scope of a project. And I would hope to see that price or lower.
How many years ago was that? Was that like three years ago?
Um, so.
Yeah.
The bid, no, yeah, so the bid tab was, um, July thirteenth of twenty twenty-one is when they came back. We opened bids the week before. So, I mean, middle of July in twenty-one. And if you kind of think back on it, that was partially at the same time when all sorts of prices were flying through the roof. So maybe there's a little more stability and we might even get better than that if we're lucky now.
Being at least aware of, uh, the possibility that we could have some damages on.
Yeah, and.
Before we have the meeting next week, shouldn't we have some idea?
And I, I have been in contact with Leon since everything's been going on and we were included in the disaster. I said I'd kind of update him if we had any specific conversations of stuff we thought was eligible. But, I mean, he's, he's working with other counties right now that are obviously harder hit than we were, like our neighbors to the west, but.
Pretty hard for us to make a decision and watch the most economic unless we have some.
I mean, yes, yes and no, because the, I guess, I would say the, the FEMA funding is icing on the cake. Um, we're, by, by law, we're required to maintain the facilities. So, I mean, we have to, and I, I think regardless of which option is chosen, we should be choosing the most cost effective solution, but.
Everything I hear from farmers is do it the cheapest way possible. If you're going to shake the banks and FEMA pays a part of it, then that, that determines my decision on what I'm going to think is most economical.
It does help, but some of that probably plays into the timeline of how soon do we put bits and stuff out? Because I, I, do you have any idea what kind of timeline it would take to go out and resurvey everything again? At this point in the game?
Yeah, yeah.
Month plus, so, I mean, if we do that, we'd have a month if they started today. And then reviewing all the information and coordinating all that with Leon. And I, I'm sure he would help us with it, but he's got a lot on his plate with the other counties as well, I'm sure. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of paperwork to work through there, I mean.
Do you plan on having this done this year?
Having it completed.
Or started or?
Start, that was my hope, is that.
That was my hope.
Yeah, but they, that construction would begin this fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that'd be one of my concerns. You can, to some degree, you can do paperwork with FEMA and document on the backside after work's already been done, if you can prove it with documentation. So I'm not, not as concerned there, but we still have to start the process with that at the beginning of our mind.
That's correct.
To be able, to be able to go back and deal with it after the fact.
We don't want to do, start something that, uh, and then ruin our chances of getting any funding.
Exactly.
Concerned.
Yep, yep. Um, so that's a fine line to walk there, and I don't know, I have not been able, I have not tracked the status of the disaster deck where Cassuth was listed. Is that fully presidential approved yet, or is that just at the state level? Okay, okay.
I think, I think.
I'm not sure that it was approved presidential.
Okay.
No.
Which, and I, I'm, yeah, I don't think, as far as drainage district goes, I don't think my area has any substantial things that I'm aware of right now, but, um, yeah, I mean, documentation is, is huge. And, and especially when we got a significant project like this that we know.
You handed up there two hundred and fortieth street approximately.
Yeah, halfway, halfway around the section there.
That top, four miles that you got in there, there's places that weren't as bad. You, you could almost move that south further and, and do a combination even, because some of that area in twenty thirty-three weren't as bad.
Which, which area out, south further?
South further, there's, there's some real bad areas down.
You're talking about, it's great township there.
Like the highway eighteen as a cutoff type area? Is that what you're saying, Roger?
Yeah.
Instead of going up another.
There's a few bad spots.
But those are smaller spots that you could actually do with riprap and, and kind of cheapen the project maybe a little, correct, is what I'm trying to think of.
Well, most.
You're the engineer.
Well, the, actually, sloping the banks back is cheaper than riprap.
I know.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, by, especially if we get it cheaper than your cost estimate.
And, and that's kind of how I'm thinking about with FEMA stuff is, you know, if we slope the banks back, that would be considered mitigation as far as FEMA is concerned.
Yep.
Um, and so we can be doc, we would have to document what are the twenty twenty-four damages that would fall under, um, that could be eligible for funding. And then we'd have to say, well, okay, we're slowing the banks back instead of putting, instead of trying to put it back or put riprap and, and then try to come up with a dollar amount that they would contribute. But if, even if that fell through, I guess my opinion is, is that's, that's going to end up being the best option anyways. And I, I know we'll have more discussions about this next week, but that cheapest option, there's a lot of, it may be half the cost of it. We just went full on riprap, but there's some big downfalls because we're just putting the bank back the way it was when it got wrecked. So it's not going to help, it's just kind of trying to give it another chance in the same state that it was before, maybe move back a little bit, but same slope, same material, same everything.
It's not, it's not improving its structure or stability for both bad events.
It's just essentially trying to put it back the way it was when this, this happened last year. So that's a risk, but it, it, it would be considered a repair. So those are all things, uh, to talk through. Any other comments, questions?
Palo Alto, you got any thoughts? We've, we've talked a bunch over here. You guys got any?
All we can do today is accept the engineer's report for the amendment, right?
Yep.
The engineer's report, and then the hearing's next week at ten o'clock, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we, you know, we've been listening, I mean, you guys know more about this than me, but you did a big repair on this just a few years ago. And so these different options, I mean, one of the big considerations should be which is more durable, because obviously, when it's done two or three years ago, it wasn't very durable.
Correct.
Yep, and that's actually, Colin kind of just touched on that, is that if, the option of going back to the same slopes and stuff would be redoing what just failed. So, yeah, I, I fully agree with that comment. The durability and long-term success of it should be a high priority in the discussion.
Are you getting much pushback from your? I don't know. My end owners from your.
Carter.
From the station one, from.
They don't want to spend any money.
I, yeah.
Well, I think in general, I've heard from quite a few of them, it's, um, most are not in favor of doing the whole ditch as we're talking about here today too. Um, but we also recognize that there are issues that need to be addressed and taken care of. So I think everyone is open to the meeting next week and, and looking forward to the discussion and trying to figure out what we want to do, so.
Okay. So, I mean, we're here to, you know, flip in the corner, yeah, to support the drainage.
Okay, yep, just thought I'd make sure there was an opportunity if you guys had any questions or comments that way.
Well, thank you for, thank you for that.
For sure. Any other thoughts here?
So we just accept the report today?
Yep.
I'm moved to accept the report.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Jarks to accept the amended, um, repair report. Is there a second from Palo Alto?
Line is still for expecting it.
Perfect, thank you guys. Any discussion?
A discussion question. We're going into the hearing next week, so.
Yep.
That's why we're really be tapped in.
Yep, for sure. Um, all those in favor on the Cassuth side, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous over here. Any Palo Alto, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay, everybody, we're all done. They accept the initial report, so all ayes here.
Perfect. All right, well, thanks Colin. Anything else, or are we good till the hearing next week?
I think we're good till the hearing, um.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be interesting what comes out of that, because we can, there's a lot of stuff to talk through and decisions to be made, I think, even on the, on how do we try to figure out what all the twenty twenty-four damages are? Is there enough to make it work while to rework over the whole ditch again?
Yep, well, sounds good, um, thanks Palo Alto, we are, we're ready to sign off here now.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good one.
See you shortly.
Yep.
Yep, see you next week.
Bye. Thanks Colin.
All right, well, thanks Colin. All right. And Carter's got one repairing.
I'm the lone winner today.
Whenever you're ready, fire away.
Number seventy-seven and DD forty-two, this is in, uh, section nine of Cresco. Brian Casey had called me about it, um, possible plug or broken tile, probably three yards. Yeah, um, make a note, this is in prevent plan.
Is that the same area where they're looking at four hundred percent number that brought to our attention last week? That right of way request?
Um, who was that? Yeah, that was in Casey's there too.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, yep, yep, it'd be the same name, could you?
Different project.
Different, different thing, yeah, yeah. I didn't know if that came from, um, wanting to borrow your fill or if they found something that was plugged and decided not to. No, I think it's, it's a different, different spot, yeah, different situation.
He lost the job.
Oh.
Don't know her.
Well, at least we didn't find him.
Yeah, we'll be able to find him.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, is there a motion for the supervisor to take care of the request?
I'll second.
Who made, who made the request?
Josh and Roger seconded. All right, any discussion on that quick motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, anything else you got for ours, Marge? There's a present for you.
I have a sending in email.
Nice texting.
You did?
Okay.
Thanks, Marge.
All right, I think we can go to, um, discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so I wasn't here last week, so can you catch me up on a couple of things?
Sure.
Um, so, um, I see that the monthly update with Second Dairy Roadman and Cassuth Regional was table till today. Were they not here or what?
They were here, it's packed in here, so.
Yeah, I, my guess is they weren't going to be here, and so they just sent the reports, because the reports were in your packet last week.
Yeah, they were here last week and.
Oh, they were here last week?
They, yeah.
We just, we just pushed that off.
Okay, so what do you, they weren't here today, what do you want me just to, you just look at their packets?
Yeah, that's fine, we, we had the reports.
And Second Dairy Road was here, so, um, okay, anything else that I should be caught up on? That I, I think Marge and Melissa filled me in on everything else.
Yeah, I'm guessing probably not.
Okay.
Nothing I can think of right now, anyway.
Okay, and I don't have anything, so.
Okay.
All right, Jack? Roger? Josh?
I had North Central Regional, um, emergency. And I also had the transportation policy board meeting, um, I'll start with the North Central Regional Emergency. Um, just basically got some updates on financials and looking at, um, where we're sitting for expense and revenue is very, very close to the budget, it was pretty tight there. Uh, the expenses to date were, um, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, a hundred and seventy dollars and forty-five cents. The revenue was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five and twenty-six cents. So it kept the budget pretty tight over there. Um, there, there was some discussion on where to, you know, potential of moving bank accounts to help can improve the revenue on, um, interest rates and stuff like that. So there was some discussion held on, on that to, you know, potentially move some funding around. Um, Aaron, the, our hazmat. Um, can't remember what the job title is, um, but he's, you know, heads up all the hazmat and stuff. Uh, just discussed a couple of things, um, that had gone on. Uh, I guess the EPA was called into the venture for the diesel spill at one point. Um, the last couple of weeks, uh, something to do with the, the tractor that, um, the dredger. A medical emergency and lost control and then they found the diesel's dumping into. Um, a waterway, so they had to.
And to collect it.
Yeah, they had to filter that out and. Uh, just kind of gave some updates on that. Uh, they discussed, um. A, the Gemini, uh, was a sensor that they use for detecting. Um, different types of hazards, materials and things like that. They decided not to purchase that. They're going a different route. Um, recent being was as far too expensive. They were talking a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus for this piece of equipment. They found some other alternatives that are a little bit more, um, cost effective. Um, other than that, just discussed. The next meeting in October sixteenth and. I was about to just get some updates there. Uh, the. Transportation policy or basically discussed the, um. Program going out for up to twenty twenty-eights. Um, what they're discussing for expenditures on, on projects and, uh, the. DOTs, projects on roadways and stuff like that for state highways. Uh, it sounds like. It is approved that we are going to have some work done on Highway eighteen east of town heading. Um, from the east side of town to the Sexton turnoff. They're actually gonna be widening that out to a super two. Um, they're working on getting the right away for that, um. So there was, there's some good discussion on that. They're hoping to get that started in twenty twenty-five and be done before twenty twenty-six. So, um.
They were talking about keeping ongoing dispenser in the other district. That's what really needs it.
Yeah, well.
Connecting all the way through.
Yeah, yeah, they, they were focused on between here and Mason City, Clear Lake area.
Yeah.
Widen that out to super two and getting some additional turn lanes in there, so, as well as replacing the. Um, road surface there because it's, it's pretty rough in all that direction, so. Um, they are planning, the district planners, uh, doing a. Um, I would be a T update meeting up in Decorah on October eighth. Um, just kind of discussing what's going on around the state and more or less in our, our corridor for. Highway projects and stuff like that. Um, they're talking about doing the Interstate thirty-five bridges. And they're pretty much gonna be doing them all in one year, so. Uh, I believe they, that she said they were going to do that next, starting next year. Um, and hopefully being able to finish it up within that next year, so. I guess, uh, avoid Interstate thirty-five next year because it's gonna be busy with, with the construction.
Which section of thirty-five did you say that was?
Uh, pretty much Franklin County up, up north. So I think that's where roughly where it's starting is, is in Franklin County and then.
All the way to the border? Or how far north from there?
Uh, I didn't catch where like they were gonna end it, but it sounded to me like pretty much through the Clear Lake area. And further north of that yet. So, I mean, they're, they said by the Drews overpasses that they're working on.
Okay.
Um, they are talking about doing some, potentially doing some additional micro-surfacing in some of the other highways. Um, I asked some questions about that because I had people ask me about Highway one sixty-nine when they did that micro-surfacing. That it was still rough and they said that's pretty normal, that stays rough for about the first year or two, so. I also talked to them about bridge inspections and just kind of dealing with, with our highways, making sure that. Our water damage, uh, because a lot of the focus had been, you know, from the DOT over and Clay County with their flooding and stuff. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that they were, where, we did have flooding in here too on some of our, our bigger rivers. And they cross the, underneath of the highways, so. Inquired about having them come over to just do some inspections, just to make sure that the highways are safe, the bridges are safe in our county too. Um, she said she was gonna email me a report if they can get that done, so. That's about all I have.
All right, Carter?
No means.
All right, um, I had a big one. Down, the NACO Annual Conference was down in Tampa, Florida. Just got back from that at five o'clock this morning after weather delays and all that, but. Um, one of the things I was gonna highlight and touched on before was. Uh, Robert Schulz's order. We had a session from Tim Nguyen with Perfect Rules Incorporated. He's a professional parliamentarian. Um, I have several things, it's kind of bullet points, but he, I believe he's going to send out slides and stuff. Um, through our staff with NACO, so I'll try and maybe get some more that way. And one of his suggestions was like the twelfth edition, which we're in right now, the back page has. A section of tinted pages, which is kind of a table and more kind of summarized version of. All your common motions and stuff, so. Um, that was, that was good information and. There was, there, there was an hour and a half worth of conversation. Um, and some more that happened after the actual session was done, but, um. One of the things like that was also surprised me is a member can change their motion prior to receiving a second. Until it's announced by the chair, or even, even after receiving a second, you could kind of have friendly amendments. Once it's announced by the chair, it's formally in front of the body. Um, and talked about earlier, the motion for calling the question has to be voted on. That was something I was not aware of before. Um, tabling also touched on a little bit before. Said that's commonly, um. Misused or misunderstood. It's not, not a functional issue necessarily, but if you're trying to follow the book of Robert Schulz's order. A motion to table would be an example of if. Say Doug was in here talking about secondary road stuff, we could table that conversation if we had. Say Wellmark here and we wanted to handle health insurance while that, that expert or individual was in the room. You could table what you're talking about and then pick it back up from the table in that same meeting. Otherwise, it should be a motion to postpone either indefinitely or for a certain time. Um, but the tabling still requires a majority vote to put on the table and to take off. Um, those are. Those are some of my quick overview, um. Robert Schul, well, Robert Schulz's order is. Yeah, he kind of laid it out that it's a lot, it's used as a baseline. If you have any state laws or local laws. Those supersede Robert's rules of order. If you wanted to have, say, a super majority for a certain thing and that was a local legislative thing. Robert's rules of order may require a simple majority, but if your local. Rules require a two-thirds, um, Robert's rules of order is always superseded by any other. Rules or laws that are formally in effect. Um, so that was, and, and we talked about different situations and stuff that way. So if anyone's got any questions, there's, I can kind of connect you guys with that, but it's. Perfectrules.com and you can find them on YouTube and stuff too. Um, we did a lot of policy resolutions.
Read through my book.
Yep, there you go. Um, policy resolutions is kind of the main focus of the conference. Couple highlights, um, I presented on the resolution. Which is giving direction for our NACO staff to work. Try and work with the federal government in regards to drainage districts and getting the federal government to pay their fair share. That was in the Finance and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. And so then I had hopped out of Ag and Oral Affairs to do that and then came back. We also had resolutions on EMS. Which is, um, has been a substantial issue here, of course. That, I believe I had talked about that resolution before. Talked about resolution for foreign ownership of ag land. Um. Classification criteria for small meat processing plants. Farm bill is always a big one when, when that discussion is up. There's a resolution for supporting the preservation of ag agriculture and natural resources. In areas of proposed alternative energy production. Um, EMS, I already talked and H two A administrative rules and reform. And then kind of another big one here, um, I had brought samples of this Detera. Um, product here probably year, year and a half ago. And that what, that is a product to neutralize prescription drugs. Um, well, basically any, any drugs that way. Um, so we had another presentation from them and one of the big things they, they changed is. They found out that the previous containers and the way they were packaged, the shipping costs like. Two and a half dollars per unit. So if you were handing them out or distributing them in a different way, postage wouldn't be an issue. But if you were, for example, mailing them to every household in your county or what, or city or whatever. That was a financial burden, so they changed the package and they added educational information to it. So they can work with you and customize whatever information would be pertinent, whether it's. Crisis helplines or mental health or drug abuse. Um, you can kind of customize and tailor that to our local needs and it's obviously a much smaller. Lower cost to ship. Now, I think they said it was like seventy-five cents now to ship. Um, substantially reduce that cost itself. And then in the expo. Like the sponsors and stuff can have a exposition center like ISAC events. There's this RX destroyer and here's a couple different container sizes, but the. Guy that was talking about it wanted to say that their product is, is different. And they have an advantage over the Detera prod, product because these are multiple use things. They're sealable. You can open it up, put pills in, close it, leave it on the shelf for. A month or six months or a year, come back, add more pills to it. These are single use where you add water, seal it and throw it in your trash. But either way. Both products are the same. They neutralize the act, the ingredients and stuff in your drugs. And then once the containers are full, you seal them up and throw them in your household trash and they're not toxic to anything. They're not, there's no way for those materials in the drugs to be pulled out. It's some carbon form. Um, it ties it, ties it up with carbon, so I'm not a expert in any of that, but. I asked Tammy to pull the number of what we had for opioid settlement funds and we're just over a hundred and twenty-five thousand right now, so. Um, food for thought, but that's, there are other counties that are actively doing stuff to use those funds and. Benefit their communities, whether it's education or prevention or a combination thereof, but I think that's. There's several viable options out there. I mean, they have bigger containers all the, this RX destroyer has bigger containers. All the way up to fifty-five gallon drums. So, I mean, one of his examples was you could have. Uh, like a two and a half gallon jug or whatever, sitting at your sheriff's office if people bring their drugs in. Whether you have a drug take back event every month or once a year or whatever that may be. They could just bring it in and use it as needed for stuff like that, or these could be distributed to homes or to. Key locations in the community where people frequently travel and, um, kind of get some of those options out there.
We haven't spent any of that money yet at all, have we?
No, we haven't done anything.
Anybody got any plans for it? Is there anything that can be used in the jail for? Have we researched any of that?
What do you mean using it in the jail?
I think Todd and Roger should be brought into those discussions. They probably have ideas. I don't know.
Like for the jail specific? Yeah, I don't. What are your thoughts there, Roger?
Well, they have people that get tossed in jail that are drug addicts or on drugs or whatever. Is there any of that money that can be used for prevention or cause or? Or for transportation of somebody that's?
Typically that's EMS that kind of handles that side of things. They're having a medical event because of drug overdose. The EMS is usually the ones that will. So give Narcan and.
Right.
Whatnot.
Is, can we use any of that money to help out?
Todd might be better versed on the requirements of that stuff and, and I haven't. I haven't asked of ways it could be used in jails or anything like that, but. So far, what I've heard of is like educational items and items like this that are. Directly trying to get drugs off the street and.
But this don't get drugs off the street. That just.
Yeah.
Prevents somebody from having overdose, doesn't it?
No, so it, it, it does get them off the street. Like one of the examples they use is, say. Someone in their. Say someone that's a grandma or whatever, grandpa, has a surgery and they're prescribed. Prescription painkillers that are higher level or whatever. They get halfway through their prescription, they're feeling okay, they stop taking them. All, all's great and then they sit in the medicine cabinet for six months or a year or whatever. And then. Someone comes along, whether it's family or friends, and they see them there and they just take advantage of the opportunity because it's there. So that would be, this would be a. A easy avenue for them to get rid of those so that they're not a potential risk down the road. Um, that's just kind of one quick scenario.
We have, we have that ready, but not only where you can take prescription drugs and get rid of them.
Yeah, the sheriff's office does the drug take backs.
They'll provide the clinic.
Yeah, I mean, we have.
Well, yeah, but these, these products, these products can be used to neutralize the, the drugs in that regard.
Well, and yeah, for people that can't get out of their houses that often, to go to a clinic to drop off, this is a way that they can do it right there in your home. So I can see the benefit from, you know, them being able to dispose of their, their medications. In their home without having to take them to a clinic because I think there's a lot of people that just can't get outside anymore.
Can they get their drugs to begin with? If they can't go anywhere, that's my question.
Family member probably takes them to the.
There's, and there's a probably.
There's always ways of it.
Right, yeah.
There's probably a lot of specifics to every situation and we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Come up with all that today. It's just kind of food. Come up with all that today, it's just kinda food for thought and, um.
But that money has to be spent at some time or given back, is my.
I think so, I don't know the specifics on timeline there, um.
Is that something they wanna put on the agenda for, uh, coming meeting to have, kind of kinda walk us through the. The timeframe on, on when we need to use some of these funds, where we can utilize these funds, um. I mean.
I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could check with them for sure and.
Do.
And try and do some coordinating, but it's, I just wanted to kinda bring that to everyone's attention again, because that's been.
One heavily discussed topic.
Very narrow, um, what you can use it for.
Well, and that's where, these are things that would apply for that, um, especially like. Things like this that could be sent to every door with information, you'd have educational benefits. Pro- plus the, um, drug neutralization side of it as well, and that's where. That's where some of the other comments from other supervisors and stuff that have used it have said they've been rather successful. Um, so, just.
I can't tell you, in this county, we have much of a problem with opioid addiction or.
Yeah, you might wanna, you might wanna look again on that one.
Every, every place does.
Yeah.
Sheriff Fisher, he'll tell you.
Yeah, there's.
So shouldn't, wouldn't it be better to coordinate with Sheriff Fisher to see what the hell would get most bang for the buck out of the dollars?
I think if we coordinate with Todd, Sheriff Fisher, Andy and Phil to kinda get some input on, on areas in the EMS world that would, you know. Potentially, some of this money goes towards helping with those situations too.
I don't wanna waste the money, just spend it to spend it, I mean, we could get something out of it.
Why don't we put that on the agenda for two weeks and I can go talk to Todd once our meeting's done and, and just kinda give him a heads up that this is gonna be. On in two weeks so he has some time to kinda gather a little bit of.
Maybe, maybe ask him if that would work.
Yeah, I, I'd ask, talk to him about it first and then.
Call him up here.
He, he can put it on the agenda.
If, if you're going, yeah, if you're going down to visit with him, just ask him about it, see what would work, see if he can.
Okay.
Come up and visit with us sometime and then, once, once we have a time that would work, then let Tammy know.
Well, you talk to Roger too, being you're coordinating this, so you can get him to coordinate with.
And maybe they already have something like that, are they using anything like that, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know what they're using right now, so I just, I just know these were things that are options and were talked about and.
My guess is if Roger's good enough already, he'd be possibly taking it to the hospital for disposal.
No, they have a drug, they have a drug take back.
Well, they, they do a take back here, but where does he take this?
He has a pro- they have a process.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
They have to send it off, yeah.
Food for, yeah.
I just skimmed through this, they didn't really give us any good ideas yet, reading through this.
I haven't read that yet, so.
Strategies for opioid settlement, other than what we've talked about already.
Lucas write that or?
Well, it's Hope County, Dubuque County.
Oh, okay.
But Bremer County.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of possibilities out there, a lot of things other people are doing and just wanted to. Bring that up for food for thought.
Kentucky, Colorado, Pennsylvania, Texas and Kentucky again.
And if anyone wants some reading material, I've got an inch and a half stack here, so that's. The limit of about what I could fit coming home.
So, good luck getting the federal government to pay any drainage assessments, we've been working on that for years.
Well, I mean.
I'm getting cynical, they just don't listen.
I, I don't expect it to be accomplished in the blink of an eye, but if it can be. Incorporated in the communication from NACO staff when we're dealing with other things, I think that has the. Potential to make some headwinds eventually, I mean, we've. Like Farm Bill, for example, there's a lot of, there's a lot of NACO priorities that got incorporated there, um, so.
They don't, they don't have too much hope of getting past this year.
Well, and that's, and that's way out of our. Level, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a whole nother can of worms, but. Lot of, lot of information out there, so. Alright, anything further?
I was, I was gonna mention real quick, um, the NIR, N I, N I R H A board. Um, we did, when we received that letter, we have forty-five days to find a delegate from June third, otherwise it terminates. Our twenty-eight E with North Iowa Regional Housing, so.
Uh, let's probably put that on next week's agenda if we, and try and find someone, I know. When I talked to Justin about it.
I called Justin too, he was gonna get back to me on one potential delegate, but he never got back to me, I need to follow up.
Yeah, so.
Forty-five days from June third, so.
We ain't got much time.
No, yeah. So when, I would say by the end of the week, you need to. Need to have somebody in mind.
Okay, well. So. Yeah.
Well, I can see the people I've talked to are not interested and, I mean, more things to do and other people that are interested. Can't because they have conflict of interest.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, yeah, and I'll probably follow up with him after the meeting too, see if we can. Make any progress there, so, anything further? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
We have a second, okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at ten thirty-seven, thank you everyone.